Lucas.
Hi.
Trustee Hacker.
All right.
Trustee Alakna.
Through the roll call?
Yes.
Here, here.
No, 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 this is to, I'm sorry, to, like, trustee Volz and that.
Oh, I, okay, okay, I.
Meeting.
Trustee Volz, get up over here.
Yes.
Trustee Volz.
Aye, aye.
Supervisor, pray.
Aye. Excellent. And then, um, go call them.
All right, roll call. Trustee Volz.
Here.
Trustee Lucas.
Here.
Trustee Hacker.
Here.
Trustee Alakna.
Here.
Supervisor, pray.
Here. I need public comment. Here I am again. Yeah. We're your president, Steve Adams, to give us, um, board presentation on boardmanship. So, yay, it's up, woo hoo.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you for everyone for being here as well.
Sorry we came in on two wheels here right at six, but, um, I tried to print this before I left and my printer jammed. I tried to save it to a stick in my computer that open point isn't working correctly, we're going to show you. I went through all kinds of hell trying to get this thing on the stick. Good news is we're here, we'll help this board to uh feel more comfortable, to be more organized, to feel more professional and efficient. Um, and to, and I want to try to leave a little bit of time for discussion because my hope is that we can create some common ground and some common view of the direction we're going here uh as an organization, as a result of the conversation and discussion that we have today. So, here's an overview of what I'm going to try to cover, notice agenda and minutes. I've really shortened up that section of this presentation because you guys know how to do your notices and agendas. Mike does a great job with those, and minutes, we're going to talk a little bit about those. How you go about convening and conducting the public meeting. Talk a little bit about rules of order, I'm not a big, I'm not hung up on rules of order for a board of this size and dealing with the kind of work you deal with, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the weeds about, you know, subsidiary motions and incidental motions and the various, you know, rulings that a parliamentarian would make in the course of of a board meeting, but I want to try to give you some sense of direction on that. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about closed meetings. Electronic communications, very quickly on those two, and then I want to spend a lot of time with IOM 6, uh which is how do we get better? How do we find common ground? How do we become more professional and, um, and therefore, um, do a better job of serving our constituents? So first of all, with regard to agendas, you know, we have to have an agenda that sets forth the general subject matter of any resolution or ordinance that will be subject of final action at the board meeting. Um, the Rice case, um, I've been citing this for a hundred years, but basically the county board in that case, tried to adopt a new benefit program for the elected county, uh, commissioners, um, under an agenda item titled New Business. And the court said, no, you got to give them some indication of what the thing is that they're going to vote on. You have to say, benefit program for commissioners, or benefit program. Um, so there has to be a description of general subject matter of what you're going to adopt when it's a resolution or ordinance at a meeting. Just something to remember and, um, uh, it's okay, uh, to, um, try and, um, find a middle ground on how much description you want to put in the agenda. Uh, so it doesn't have to be excruciatingly detailed. Secondly, um, the agenda, at a regular meeting, you can discuss whatever is on the agenda and you, if, if individual trustees want to bring up a topic, they're certainly within their authority and power to do that during trustee topics. Um, and, um, but at a special meeting, you're limited to the subject matter that's on the agenda. So, let's talk a little bit about minutes. Um, again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but, um, just to get some Ps and Qs here, some foundational stuff. So, you have to have minutes for every meeting. The minutes by statute must contain the, the items and those three bullet points of date, time, and place. Uh, members of the public body recorded as either present or absent, and if they were attending by remote per, uh, remote means, then that would be reflected in the minutes. And then there's a summary of discussion on all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided, and a record of actions and votes taken. That's what the statute says the minutes need to include. So there's a deadline for the approval of minutes, um, in the statute. It has to be, they have to be approved by the later of the second subsequent regular meeting, or thirty days after the meeting. By statute. Which is interesting because, you know, in cases like where there's a dispute on the minutes, sometimes you can't get them resolved that quickly, but, um, I've always told clients, look, if you're conscientiously working on the minutes, the, um, and there's a problem, the AG isn't going to have a problem with that. They're going to say, look, it's not like you're ignoring them or you're avoiding them. You're just trying to work through maybe differences of opinion about the minutes. Um, and so, I don't think that any, uh, I don't think the public access counselor who is the office inside the attorney general's office that decides issues related to Open Meetings Act and FOIA would punish us or penalize us if for some reason we weren't able to get our minutes adopted in that timeframe, but we were working on them. So after they're approved, uh, you have to get them on the website, that's required by the statute. And, um, you can also uh publish them, post them on your wall here at the administrative office if you want. That's not required, but, um, if anybody comes in and wants to look at them, you have to make them available. Same format for what's included in the closed minutes, as is in the open minutes. Um, and we can approve closed minutes in, in closed session, if you want to do that. Okay? You all know, I think, that you have to semi-annually review the closed minutes. Every six months, we're going to have a closed meeting under 2C 21 to discuss all the previously unreleased closed meeting minutes. And it's up to the board to decide when release is appropriate. Um, there can be, uh, a lot of reasons why you may not want to release closed meeting minutes. Uh, but I've laid out a little process here before I get to those. Let me just go through the process. So you close the meeting to discuss whether to release the closed minutes. There's the motion you would make to go into closed to discuss closed minutes. Then you determine whether to release any of the closed minutes. And then, um, once you have major determination, when you come out back into open session, you should say, the board has determined that it's not going to make any minutes, closed minutes, uh, newly available for public inspection at this meeting. Uh, or you can say the board has determined that it's going to release the meeting, the meeting, closed meeting minutes of October 13. Um, so, regardless of whatever you decide in, you know, uh, in your closed meeting, uh, you have to come out and make an oral statement of what you've determined. I suggest, uh, a little process here, Mike, that might be helpful to you in the future. I don't know, it might be more than you need for a district this size, but the idea is to give the individual trustees an opportunity to look at the closed meeting minutes of the past and decide whether they want to release any for the public. Keep in mind that approving closed meeting minutes is very different than releasing closed meeting minutes. There's approval, which you want to do right away after you've had the closed meeting and Mike has prepared the minutes, and you all have a chance to review them, and you want to uh move to approve them pretty quickly. But the decision about whether to release them is a separate decision that you have to make every six months. So what, what bases do we use to release closed meeting minutes? It's really just a finding by the board that there's a need for confidentiality, it still exists as to all are part of the minutes. Or that there's no longer a need for confidential treatment. And just to try to give some guidance on what that looks like, um, I've listed some things, um, that I think are, um, things to consider when you're evaluating whether or not you want to release minutes. And I, I, I am a conservative by heart when it comes to protecting, you know, the liability risks of a public entity, so I tend to err on the side of, let's not release them. And I think any risk management agency, including Thoma, would tell you that, you're better off not to release them if you've got any sort of a notion in your mind that doing so might harm an individual, uh, or it might not be in the best interest of the district. If there's a need to protect the confidentiality of an individual or of, uh, someone on the board even, and it relates to a, um, uh, you know, something that's now resolved, but it still could potentially create an exposure risk for you through defamation, a false wire, misleading, or, you know, interfering with private interests. Those sorts of things, you want to pay attention to those things. Obviously, the private interest piece is not something that commissioners can take advantage of or trustees, but pretty much the other things on the list. So, the standards for release. Couple last things on minutes, and then I'm going to shift gears. You don't want to do verbatim minutes. You only want to correct minutes to accurately reflect what was said or done. Not to change, uh, what, what is recorded about what was said. So in other words, what I mean by that is if you said, I'm against Proposition 10, but you meant to say, I'm for Proposition 10, you really, the, the remedy for that is not in the minutes of the meeting where you said I'm against Proposition 10. You would have to make that statement at the next meeting, I made a mistake at the last meeting, and I said, I'm against it, but I'm really for it, so I want the minutes of this meeting to say, I'm for it. And you don't change what was actually said or done, uh, in the minutes, um, after the fact. Okay? So, um, it's important to keep open and closed meeting minutes forever, you never destroy them. Open and closed are, should be kept in separate binders, hard copies, if you keep them electronically, be very careful with where you store the electronic ones. I've had clients that accidentally put their closed meeting minutes on the that was available to the entire staff, and it was an excruciating analysis of a, of a director of an organization, and everybody in the organization read it, or saw it, because it was, the recording was online in some of the minutes. So, you don't, you want to be careful if you're storing those electronically. So before you vote on something that's on the agenda, you have an agenda that gives the public a reasonable idea of what's happening. It's a, it's a motion or a, um, a resolution or an ordinance to approve a revision to the health benefits for employees. So when you, um, before you take the vote on that, the motion should say, I move that we approve the new program for the health benefits for the employees. And that gives the public sufficient understanding of what it is you're going to vote on. Uh, but in addition to having it in written form on the agenda, you also need to communicate what the purpose of the action that you're taking is. You can't just say, I vote, I move that we approve item three. And there's no description of item three on the agenda, there's no description in anything that's been made, that they've made available to the public. And so, the public doesn't get a reasonable explanation. Having said that, when you're taking action in a board meeting on a, on a proposition that's on the agenda, you don't have to summarize what led to consideration of this matter, you don't have to give any verbal explanation of the significance, or ask the public if they understand it, or read the whole thing, or disclose even the key terms. You don't have to do any of that, you just have to give them an indication of what it is you're voting on. Got it? Very important, with the exception of approving closed meeting minutes, you can't do anything in closed session, and no final action in closed session. But, I, I always tell clients, look, it's important sometimes to get a consensus on something, and by consensus, I mean clear direction from your board on how you want to handle something going forward. For example, you might want to direct your attorney to file a complaint, or to, um, communicate an offer to buy a piece of equipment. You can do that in closed session, that's not final action. It's not final action until we get to the contract phase, and you're going to approve a contract that actually buys the district, that's final action. So you do have the ability in closed session to give direction to your staff, to your lawyer, to others, when there's consensus to do so amongst the trustees. Clear? Uh, you all know that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, you all know that public participation is required. You want to make sure that we have rules that we've adopted in writing, prior to the meeting, that's, they're enforceable if they're in writing and you guys have established those rules. You shouldn't debate when you get into a public meeting, public discussion. The worst thing in the world is when somebody comes in and they start ripping on the trustees or on some action you've taken, and you get into a verbal sparring match with them in a, in a public comments section of the meeting. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but the best practice is, look, you didn't know this guy was going to come in and bitch at you about this, you're not prepared to discuss this. Obligation to answer any questions that are given to you in public participation. And, uh, you're, you should make it clear to them that, look, thank you for your complaints, your concerns, we're referring those to our staff, or to Nicole as the supervisor, and we will get back to you. Or, or thank you for your comments next item. You owe them nothing in that situation from a legal perspective. You can set reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on your public comment, which means we can limit it to three minutes, we can say the whole thing's only going to be twenty minutes. Uh, but we can't get into the content of what they can or cannot talk about. In other words, we can't say, no complaints about staff, or no complaints about the condition of property. You can't restrict them that way, they have to get their, they're entitled to the three minutes on whatever subjects that you stipulate for the, for the, for the forum. And that's because if you start regulating their comments based on the content of those comments, you're depriving them of their First Amendment rights. So, important to make sure that you're fair and orderly in that process.
Sure. Question. Um, so you can limit it to, say, twenty minutes for an entire group?
Yeah, I think it's
So like, let's say, somebody has three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, and then when you hit twenty, it's like you're done, even if there's ten more people that want to say?
You can do that. Again, you want to make sure that that's a rule you have established in your written body of rules, so you need to have approved rules, say, our max time is twenty, we can go longer by vote of the board, and the board can always suspend that restriction, if it wants to. But, the idea is to put a limit on that, because you're not here to conduct a public hearing. You're here to pay the bills and, you know, take the action of the township and keep this organization moving. So, it's beyond, um, what you should have to endure, more than twenty or thirty minutes at a board meeting for public comment. And that's widely accepted and widely used. If it's something crucial, you could say, I move we suspend the thirty minute rule and allow ten more comments. Yeah?
Yeah, I understand, you don't want to do a debate, start an argument. And we are allowed to ask questions if we need a clarification, like someone to come in and want something about the stop sign.
Sure, absolutely.
You could ask questions about, you know, so that's not wrong.
Right, it's, well, you know, I'm giving you that advice more, there's no law that says you can't engage them if you want to. And sometimes it makes sense to do that.
Yeah.
What street was that you were talking about where you wanted the stop sign, or where are you?
Set by the park.
You know, what's the basis of that again, tell me again, or, you know, but I, I think you want to avoid getting into debates because it's very disruptive for the, for the whole group, it can be problematic.
Personally, I would prefer to get the email addresses set per person, so that we can, or any phone number, so we can talk to them.
I think that's where we have to establish, yeah, rules.
Absolutely.
Because the law allows us to ask questions.
Yeah, it does, and I, I think you, you know, apply common sense, you know?
Exactly.
If it's something simple, that we just need another piece of information, or simple in the sense that, uh, we're trying to just make sure we understand the complaints, things like that.
Which is why I want to change from address on there to email address, instead of, no, but that's me.
Yeah, the only, I, I do have a, I do issue a warning.
I said, put optional on there.
Yeah, as long as you put optional.
I was going to say, because, yeah, we can't require people to
You can't require someone to give her address because of a ridiculous pack decision involving the local Vermont a few years ago.
Right.
And, um, basically, um, though, in my thirty-five years of doing this, every client, every meeting where there's been public participation, the people are more than willing and happy to give their address. This one unique case in, in Lamont where the lady said she wasn't sure, and then she gave her address anyway, and then she filed a complaint about the fact that they asked her for her address. It's a terrible case, but, um, yeah, you shouldn't force them to give you their address. That's the point. And who knows where that will go in the future? There might be more things you can't require them to provide. I think it's always a good idea if somebody who's addressing you is in your, lives within the territorial limits of your district. If they're a township resident, you know, or, or are they not? Are they coming here from, you know, downstate to cause trouble, or are they somebody who really cares as a taxpayer? You know, it, it seems to me that you should have the right to insist on them telling you that, but you technically don't, because they don't have to give that, so. So let me talk a little bit about rules of order, not a lot here, because I really believe that common sense should be your basic rule, rules of order. So, typically, board policies and most townships and, and other units of local government operate under Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, but the Open Meetings Act and Illinois law have a lot to say about voting and, you know, um, how you allow debate, when you allow debate, and so on, so we can't just rely on Roberts. But, if you don't have anything else, that tends to be what people fall back on, and that's fine. I mean, Roberts is a good system, it sets up some, you know, very sensible ways and means of dealing with um, matters as they come before the board, but we really don't have to get past the real basics when it comes to Roberts. So, this slide just shows some of the things that are the goals of Roberts. Our main goal is to just maintain order of control, for the good of the group, to be efficient, to be constructive, and to get personal, uh, arguments out of the debate. Try to be fair and stable, and professional. So, that's what the rules, the goals are, and the rules, you can see, look, we just want to have a rule to cover how we're going to handle certain things in case we get tangled up, you know? If we can't figure out how to handle the situation. So rule number one is you got to have a forum. Under Illinois law, for a five-member board, you have to have at least three trustees. And, um, if you don't have a forum, if you have a called meeting, and only two trustees show up, you can't conduct any business, you can say, we're going to have our next meeting on, you know, whatever scheduled meeting day is, probably be something that's also available on your website, so you're not doing anything other than that. You don't convene the meeting, you don't adjourn the meeting. You just say, we can't have a meeting, the next meeting is X until further notice. That's all you can do if you don't have a forum, okay? And, uh, that, that pretty much handles the forum issue. It is important, too, that except for the governor's disaster proclamation basis for going into remote participation, if you set that aside, um, and you try to have people participate remotely under the uh, Section seven dash eight, or seven A of the Open Meetings Act, which permits people to participate remotely if they are, um, due to illness or other disability, family, or other emergency, and, um, a work obligation of work related to the township. So for one of those three reasons, someone can be absent and participate by remote. As you did tonight, there has to be a physical forum present when you're going to have somebody participate that way. It's not required if you're doing it under the governor's seven E, uh, new process, uh, when there's a disaster, when there's a, um, medical or health-related disaster that affects your township, and we have that right now, as a matter of fact. So, um, you could do it without that, but if you're operating without the, that rule, then you have to, you have to take it home. And you should have procedures in place, um, to describe how that's done. And there should be notice to be sent to the clerk before the meeting starts, so that he knows it's going. Okay? So a little bit about how to make motions, I know you guys know how to do this, but one thing that I try to encourage clients to do, and no, and clients are notoriously bad at this. They'll, okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of contracts for intergovernmental, or intergovernmental agreement with the school district for pay vales. And then there's a ten-minute discussion about that contract, and then somebody says, well, I guess I'll make a motion. Technically, the motion's supposed to be the first part, so as soon as that thing comes up on the agenda, regardless of whether you intend to vote for it or not, you want to get the discussion going, say, I move we approve contract from, with the school district. And then there's a second, and then the debate starts. Technically, that's how Roberts is supposed to work. Just a common sense language thing. Trying to say, I move approval of, or I move we approve, rather than I make a motion. Uh, just language. You do have to have basic motions like that. Move to approve something that's on your agenda needs to be seconded. And then, once it's seconded, then the supervisor's role as chairperson of the meeting kicks in, and she is the one who calls on people. Um, and any discussion or debate you have about it should be in that context. And all comments that are made about that contract, or about that pending motion, should be directed to the supervisor. So you're not arguing back and forth across the table, looking your opponent in the eye, calling him a nasty name. You direct it and say, mister, you say, uh, Ms. Supervisor, uh, here's my opinion of the contract. I know that, uh, trustee Alakna has a different opinion about it, from hearing from her about it, but this is my position. That's, that helps take the personal piece out of it, if you direct the comments to the chair, and you refer to the other trustees by their name, by their, by their formal name, the trustee Alakna. Rather than to say, well, Barr doesn't like this, or blah, blah, blah. You know, you want to try to take that personal piece out of it. So subsidiary motions, I'm just going to talk about those briefly. So, let's say you're, you've got the motion pending to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the school district, and then, uh, one of the trustees, uh, wants to amend that to make it go five years instead of three years. So there's, I move we amend the term of the agreement from three years to five years. Before that amendment can be considered, it needs to be seconded. And, uh, then there's debate and discussion of the amendments before you have any debate, discussion, or vote on the main motion. So, I didn't quite get that all out. So on the amendment, there's debate and discussion, and then a vote. And then you go back to the main motion. Okay, so the main motion's been amended, we're going to have a five-year contract instead of a three-year contract, now we're going to vote on that motion to approve the contract with a five-year term. Clear? You can also move to table it, or postpone it to a certain time. Those are two different things technically, but most people just think table is like, we're not going to consider it tonight. A technical thing with tabling is, we're not going to, um, we're going to set it aside while we take care of something that's more urgent, and then we're going to come back to it at the same meeting. That's what table really means. But no one ever says, you know, take off the table, I move we take this off the table, which is what you're supposed to say when you're going to kick it to a future meeting. So you can move to table it. Uh, try to say, you know, when you want it to come back, so I move we table this till the next board meeting. Or I move we table this and have a special meeting two weeks from now, resolve this. And then that, that motion then supersedes the main motion, and it says, okay, we got to resolve that before we take it on the main motion. If it's the table, you're not going to take any more action on the main motion. If it's table, if it's the table and the motion to table fails, then you're back to the main motion for tonight's meeting. Got it? So there's all kinds of motions, um, and I'm not going to go through these, but I encourage you to go, you know, when you have a minute, go back and read this slide, kind of look at these things, they can help you understand when you can, uh, make motions to try and, um, assist in, in the process of, of, uh, you know, orderly debate, if you will. So, we need more time, we need to limit the time, we need to table this, we need to, uh, take a ten-minute recess, because I'm going to make a phone call. Or, we've been here too long on this, I move we adjourn. Those are privileged, they supersede the pending motion. And then point of order, suspend the rules, those things also, um, typically are not, those do interrupt the main motion as well, typically. So, the point of order. Weren't we supposed to get pricing information about this product before we entered the contract? Yes, let's look that up, make sure we did that the way we said we were going to do it, and then go back to the discussion. So, when you, uh, bring action before the board, you can do so to, uh, rescind it, to repeal it, to annul it, to discharge a committee that was formed to consider it, or to reconsider it. Uh, those are all things that happen after Those are all things that happen after the motion is originally dealt with. And they all have different rules, but the moment, the primary one is reconsider. There's a lot of, just, there's differences of opinion on how the rules work for these various things, but the motion to reconsider typically has to come from the side that was successful on the main motion. So if somebody wants to reconsider the intergovernmental agreement with the school district and they voted for the, they voted for the agreement, then they would be in a position to ask that it be reconsidered, they could move to reconsider. Typically reconsideration comes at the same meeting that it was adopted at originally, but because we're a public body, with any, and there's a process for setting the agenda, if that process allows you to put it on the agenda in the future, you can bring it back. So there's a kind of a difference of opinion on how, on when and how the board can reconsider. But those are the kind of the fundamental rules. So the chairing of the board meeting, we want to, the supervisor as the chair is going to follow some typical best practices, which the person who makes the motion should get the first chance to talk about the thing that they're proposing. And again, obviously it has to be something on the agenda, you can't vote on something that's not on the agenda. But assuming it's on the agenda, the person who makes the motion gets the first opportunity to speak. And then it's up to the chair to determine who speaks next, but the typical practice is you alternate between the cons and you, you know, give preference to somebody that hasn't spoken at all yet. So if, if two of you get into a discussion for 10 minutes about it and then there's somebody who hasn't had a word yet, it's up to the chair to kind of say, hey, wait, we haven't heard from Bar on this. So not to pick on you, but, you know, we haven't heard from Bar on this, so Bar, why don't you give me your thoughts? You know, that's. And you want to just kind of, you know, again, Nicole, you just, the goal is fairness and kind of giving everybody a chance to hear what needs to be said and understand that and then make an informed decision based on that. But there is a point at which it's not, there's no new information being communicated and it's just like argument. And when that happens, it's okay for you as the chair to say, look, I'm going to cut off debate in five minutes. Do you have anything new to add? And again, you know, with the same level of decorum and respect that you would have for in any other context, you know, you ask for final comments and, you know, unless they outvote you once you make that decision, that's it. Okay? So you have some control over the length of the debate. If you're, if you're planning on shortening the debate or not letting it go too long, sometimes a good idea to say ahead of time, hey, I'm only going to give 10 minutes to this. Or we're going to, unless you, unless there's, you know, a difference of opinion, you guys want to vote on it, and my plan was to only spend five, 10 minutes on this. You have it within your authority to do that, subject obviously to the board voting to do something differently, by, you know, by majority. So does that help in terms of the rules? Something else that I, because it helps you with your flexibility and basically based on consensus, say that one of you makes a motion and then somebody says, you know what, we needed to have that contract go into effect in January, not February. So I move to amend the motion to approve the contract effective in February to read that it's going to become effective in January. And if the person who's moving doesn't have an objection, that's not enough. It used to, a lot of people think that as long as a guy who makes the motion is okay with the amendment, that's okay. Now, once the motion is made and seconded, then the motion then belongs to the group and the amendment then has to be by vote or by friendly amendment, that means if no one objects. So if, if everybody says, oh yeah, let's do it for January, that makes sense, let's do that, then by consensus, we just change the main motion to say by January, we're going to enter the contract in January. Again, just common sense, but you have to respect the fact that if somebody disagrees with that change, you're going to vote on it. So real quick on closed meetings and then I'm going to cut over to good meeting practices. So there are 33 different statutory bases for closing meetings. I've just listed in these slides a handful of the more common ones. So it obviously matters dealing with employment, collective bargaining, appointment for someone to fill public office when there's a vacancy, hearings under certain circumstances, when you're considering the purchase of real estate, where you're considering the price for the sale of real estate. If you're talking about the security of the township offices, obviously litigation and things related to litigation that involve your risk management agency or the Tormentary Act. And then there's a couple of that, and you all, you obviously know about semi-annual review of closed meeting minutes, we talked about that, but also 2C16 gives you the right to engage in closed meeting for the purposes of self-evaluation practices and procedures or ethics, but you have to have someone from TORMA come up and sit with you if you're going to have a closed self-evaluation. Okay? But sometimes that's useful. It's a chance for everybody to kind of air their position on procedures and practices of the, of the board or anything that you want that fits into that category of self-evaluation practices and procedures or ethics. So it's just another option you have to try to work on problems. And then you get a chance, there, under certain circumstances, you can meet behind closed doors with your auditor. I've told you, I think a couple of times, Nicole, that closed meetings don't have to be listed on the agenda, but the regular practice is if you know you're going to have a closed meeting, just put it on the agenda. But it's very clear in the stat sheet that you don't have to have it on the agenda for you to go on to a closed meeting, if you need to or if there's something, somebody is involved. So you all know the process for closing a meeting. I move, we go into closed session under 2C1 for the purpose of discussing employment, appointing employment compensation, dismissal of specific employees in the township, has to be seconded, can be deliberated, but you have to have a roll call vote. So you have to identify the section of the Open Meetings Act that you're closing. You can't, technically, you're not supposed to just say, I move, we go into closed for personnel, because technically the PAC says that's not good enough. You have to say 2C1 for the purpose of discussing the employment, you know, the employment of a particular employee. Okay? And then once you're enclosed, you're subject to, your, your only subject matter enclosed is what you went into closed for. So it's to talk about employment matters within, involving individual employees. If you went in to talk about Joe and all of a sudden there's a need to talk about Sam, you can still talk about Sam, but you can't talk about buying real estate. Okay? Some best practices for electronic communication, don't email or text during meetings. There's a very famous case from the city of Champaign where some city councilmen were texting and emailing during the meeting, you know, a smart-ass reporter sent a FOIA saying, I want all the texts and emails that were sent by Commissioner so-and-so during the meeting. And it turned into this huge morass of hassle. Ultimately, they didn't have to disclose all of those communications, but it emphasized the fact that there's risk involved with, with, you know, sending texts and emails while you're in public session. And so, and the other, the other fundamental rule for electronic communication is if you, you know, you should be very careful with email and texting because FOIA can get to those emails and texts, even if they're on your personal device, if they're about public business, if they're about the business of the township, they can get to your private device. City Chicago had a case involving Rob Emanuel's emails related to the Laquan McDonald case and some other things that he was sending emails about while he was, yeah, that might have been Lori, I'm not sure, but anyway, there were emails sent about the Laquan McDonald matter or sent on a private cell phone and the mayor thought he didn't have to disclose those, but the court said he had to. So you want to be very careful. Don't put things in posts on social media or texts or emails that you wouldn't be able to live with on the front page of the local paper the next day. That's kind of my general rule of thumb. Because if it's something that could be embarrassing, somebody gets a hold of it, they, once you, once you've sent it, it's gone forever, it's out there. And it's, you know, it's capable of being spread, whether you think it will be or not. So always be careful with email. Before you start an email, ask, is this subject to FOIA? And if it is, is it shielded from public disclosure? In other words, is there an exemption under FOIA that can apply? If you're not sure, call me or call Nicole and let's get an answer to it before you send it. Or preferably pick up the damn phone, which is what we always did before email. All right? All right, so we've got about 15 minutes to talk about debate, conflict and being a good board. Okay? No one in this room would disagree with my first bullet point, I hope, that robust debate is appropriate. We want to have robust debate, that's what, you know, all the great Supreme Court justices have told us is the essence of democracy is the ability for both sides to be free and express exactly how they feel about any particular legislative measure. But holding a grudge, making it personal, taking it personal, those are not, you know, appropriate, they're not, you know, part of, shouldn't be part of the political process. We can do better. Professionalism is how we can do that. We can do all kinds of things to address, you know, any sort of breakdown in professionalism, but the best thing we can do is just start with the basic understanding that we're all here trying to do the right thing and we just disagree and that's okay, we respect each other in spite of that. You know, and we're going to treat each other with respect as we rely on facts and argument rather than personal attacks. And I don't think I've heard a whole lot of personal attacks in this group, but I've seen some.
Haven't been to every meeting.
Well, that's true, but I also, I, I've seen spirited debate, but a lot of times it's focused on issues. And that's good, that's okay. You know, I'm not trying to take away anybody's passion, but I do think it's important to try to depersonalize it, don't make it about the person. And if we all are committed to making it about the ideas and who's got the better idea and why, that's where, that's where the township wins. So you guys should, and you shouldn't micromanage, I know, I don't get a sense that there's a lot of micromanaging going on here, but, you know, micromanaging, what I, the way I describe that is when trustees go into the office and they start looking over the shoulder of individual employees, like the general assistance employee, coming in during office hours and pestering them, telling them how to do their job or, you know, telling the, right, I'm just correcting, telling our highway commissioner what he needs to do, you know, that he needs to shovel, you know, he needs to, he needs to shovel these streets before he does, or plow these streets before he does those streets or, you know, God forbid, come over to my house and trim my bushes, you know, none of that's professional.
Throw that one down, I'm going to take that.
Yeah, well hopefully he would reject that. Okay?
What would happen?
Oh, no.
Okay. So, you know, you just want to be, you want to have clear lines of communication, you want to not disconnect, but you want to stay focused on issues, not personalities. And then, you know, once, you know, that's kind of the things that if you have in place, this is a fundamental respect for each other, a fundamental commitment to being professional in how we deal with our issues, that's a great start. And then once you're in conflict, let the supervisor slash chairperson use her authority to manage the debate. Don't put staff in the middle of dispute, don't avoid the conflict, it'll just get What are your options? Understand your options. Try to help, you know, good listening is so fundamental to being able to solve problems. A lot of times I hear people argue at board meetings and it's like neither of them understand where the other person's at on this subject or on this issue. And if, because a lot of times if you can stop the passionate argument and say, what am I hearing? What is she really trying to say or what is he really trying to say? Maybe we can diffuse this in another way without, you know, or maybe I can help her understand my position by appealing to this rather than just that, you know? So sometimes being a good listener is the best way to do all some of this stuff. You can always meet outside, two commissioners or trustees can always meet outside of the, out of the boardroom and discuss, get together for a conversation. You know, do have, take the opportunity to get to know each other. That's useful and helpful and then I think it, it enables you to make more progress for the benefit of the township. I talked about the closed meeting for self-evaluation, but you all know about that since I already talked about it. And then, you know, we just want to make sure that disagreement's okay, but, and robust is okay, but make it professional, you know? Don't lie, don't hide the whole, the whole story. Don't try to manipulate people on the other side, you know? That goes both ways, always. Don't be the victim, don't be, don't try to, you know, engage in over-the-top aggression. Don't, don't, you know, try tactics that you think are going to work, but they're just personal manipulation and stuff like that. So just a list of things to be conscious of. Shorter meetings, I don't know how, I don't think you have a big problem with this, but one thing that's really important is doing your homework before you get to the meeting. Looking at the board packet Friday or over the weekend and saying, hmm, I'm not sure I know what this means, I think I'll call Nicole on Monday or shoot her an email and just say, hey, give me the skinny on this, what are we trying to do? What the, you know, I don't understand X or Y can we talk about? So that we don't have to air it out in the meeting. It's much easier if you can get to a common understanding, if you pick up the phone and do it before the meeting. A lot of times you'll see, you know, a lot of my clients, they get the bill list, you know, with the packet and they go through the bill list and say, so what are we buying, you know, 10 rubber ducky's at Walmart for, you know, whatever? And it's like, oh, that was for that kid event, okay, I remember. You know, but if you bring that into the meeting, you're wasting everybody's time on something that you could have easily figured out before, you know? So it's important. And that also keeps the district humming because when you get into the meeting, if somebody can't answer it off the top of their head, now you're at an impasse. Now you got to waste. And that, you know, can be harmful, or that can be harmful, but it can, you know, be disruptive to the employees, the workflow, a whole organization can get mucked up by that. So it's important for you to try to do your homework on this, on things. And then, you know, stay on topic, that's a really important one. We talked about setting time when it's on debate. Don't re, don't go back and rehash decisions that have already been made, you know, once a, and, once a decision's been made, move on, right? You know, okay, you're going to win some, you're going to lose some, but the key is just to keep moving and to accept the fact that you're not going to win all the time. You're going to win some of them, you're not going to win all of them. If you're in the majority, you're probably going to win most of them. If you're in the minority, you're probably not going to win most of them. But just try to be constructive, try to help the organization as a whole. So as a whole, the board can look at trying to set some reading goals, you know, what, everybody knows what's on the agenda, but what else do we, is there anything else we need to talk about? Can we get into anything else that we could talk about? Is there stuff we should try to avoid getting into at the meeting? I know you got a beef with, you know, one of the, trustee Lucas has got a beef with Nicole about something, but it doesn't, it's not something that's germane to the agenda. Guys, get offline and get on the phone and figure it out. Get together for a cup of coffee, figure it out. That sort of thing. And then just stay focused on trying to be efficient and within law, you know? But if you have objectives for the meeting and for just kind of generally what you're trying to accomplish as a group during your current terms, that's always great, you know? So try to make a plan. What do we want to try to do between now and the end of 2022 in terms of, you know, changing how we allocate our funds and, you know, that are from federal government or whatever, you know? Just work together, come up with a game plan. That'll also create some community, some commitment, some, some common objectives. So look for efficiency procedures that can make you more efficient as well. So unfinished business is not an opportunity to rehash debate. I had a client once that made these signs with like a wooden stick and a, and a piece of paper. I had a client once that made these signs with like a wooden stick and a, and a piece of paper that said, "Rehash." And so whenever somebody went to talk, started talking about something that was already decided, they'd wave these signs around, it was quite funny. But I think that the second and third, or third and fourth, rather, items on this slide are important. You want to make sure that there's clear direction for Nicole going forwards, and that the board's not unclear about what they need her to do or what the, what the motion or the action is, so that she doesn't have to guess at what it is that the group is saying that they need staff to do. So say you vote on something, but in your mind, you're like, "Well, how is Nicole going to execute that?" Or Nicole says, "How am I going to execute that?" Bring it up, say, "Okay, now you adopted this. I need to get some further direction for you, from you on how I do certain things." It's sometimes necessary, and it's appropriate. And the board should take responsibility for making sure that you have clear direction, that you can communicate to your staff or that you need to take action right forward. And then be realistic about your timetable with all the liberals, you know? Having Nicole come, you know, get a thirty-page report to us on something she is nothing about in a week, it's not realistic. So be realistic about people's limits in terms of their time and their, and their other responsibilities. Just about new business, I think it's important that you have all of your docs in order before you vote on something under new business. Staff should be able to say, "Hey, we've got this down to a T. We know exactly how we're going to implement this, we're ready to go." Recommending that you approve this. And, you know, then as the board has your, your execution plan or what your, what your goals are and how you're going to roll this out, et cetera, et cetera, they can talk about it. But if you come in with a clear game plan, that's perfect. No harm in kicking it to a later month if you need it to figure stuff out. It's better than to go half-assed. Move quickly when transitioning, so when you go from public comments into the first order of business on your old business, you want to move quick. All right, we're not going to chit chat for five minutes between agenda items, okay? You guys are the leaders of this organization. It's your job to court, to chart the course for future action. Focus on the mission and vision, what are we trying to do? And then let's get some consensus about what we want to try to accomplish between now and the end of our terms. What we want to do, and work together with each other and with your staff, and integrate and execute. And then remember that your role is primarily policymaking and legislative. Pay the bills, try to understand what the community wants, and try to understand how, what you can and can't do. And be realistic about that. You know, township's a township. You don't have authority to, you know, do things that the city does, you know? You don't have authority to, you know, levy a tax, a sales tax, for example. So you want to know what your authorities are and aren't, having to discuss that with you in the future. This really isn't so much for you, this is more about districts and public bodies that have big staffs. But the key is you don't want to get involved in the day-to-day, that's not your role. These are the kind of things you can focus on, including an inventory, policies, procedures, ordinances. How do we operate, what are we trying to accomplish? And we, I'm going to just kind of zip through, because I want to let you guys ask some questions. But here's some good board, board traits, things to kind of keep in mind. This is my role, these are the things I should be exhibiting. I'm a fiduciary, I have a responsibility to the organization ahead of my personal interests when deciding things about the organization. I have to follow the law, I have to, you know, make sure that we're doing things according to the rules. Committee's strategic, however you want to handle that. These are things you don't want to be. You don't want to be a meeting disruptor, or have unprincipled disagreeing, or be unprepared, or try to bully people. Right? So plan, set goals, recognize your strengths and weaknesses, unite behind common goals, keep working, listen to your constituents. It's okay to make mistakes, self-evaluate. And, you know, once a vote's taken, support it, even if you didn't vote for it. I think you should try to do that as a practice. I can tell you that courts do that all the time. The US Supreme Courts documented having done that a million times on really controversial issues. Passionate disagreement, it's a four-three vote. It's about abortion, and they unanimously take the action that the majority has because it's important that they communicate, that they're unified, and this, they all respect the fact that this is going to be law. So, you know, and we do it each night. But we could probably take a few minutes, right, and just start late, especially if nobody's coming in.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, because I didn't know your... When you're talking here about the agenda, we talked about the agenda has to be posted. Okay, so we talked about it having, I don't think we talked about the forty-eight hours, but forty-eight hours business, it's got to be put, okay?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, okay. I saw nothing in the law that things that we were discussed needed to be handed in to be concluded by, in a packet by forty-eight hours.
I mean, it's pretty impossible to get something on the agenda if the, if the person who has the responsibility for getting it posted forty-eight hours on the basis of another channel, which you want to put on.
So is that a prior rule?
What's your, let me ask, let me ask you a question first. What's your practice for putting things on the agenda right now?
I would like to have things on, or to me, by the latest. By, it would like to be by noon on Friday, because I, we'd like to get them in, in your hands by Friday so you guys can review it. But I, I have to, like, for example, this, this PowerPoint presentation, I would like to at least have it so that people can at least see it, like, have it presented so that the public can see what, what needs to be presented or what...
We just thought today, though, and we still talked about it, of course, I understand that. If it was...
You definitely want to give staff enough time to include it on the agenda. So, I mean, it's a little bit of a bylaw, you give her...
There was a situation that it was supposed to be on the agenda, and I didn't, you know, provide anything in the packet. My idea was to come and make a presentation and hand out things, and it ended up not being on the agenda because it wasn't in the packet. I looked through the law, there's nothing in the law says that it has to be in the packet. It just need, and we had, you know, multiple people...
Right, the law doesn't require that. If you have a local rule, that would be, that would, you know, might, might govern on something like that. But, you know, I mean, if you, if, if there's no practical... Yeah, sure.
So, so, okay, I wanted to clarify, because I looked everywhere through the law, and nowhere in the law says that we have, we have it. I understand that if you bring it to a meeting and it's on the agenda to vote, people may say, "Hey, I want more time to vote, so look at this."
Absolutely.
I think that's extremely reasonable. And then the other thing is far the meetings, the minutes of the closed meetings, I also check the law too. Anyone on the board, unless there's another law stating otherwise, can take those minutes home, isn't that correct?
I didn't hear the first part.
Okay, for a closed meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I checked this in the law, and unless we have an ordinance stating that they can't leave the building, anybody in the board meeting can have those minutes.
Closed minutes?
Correct. But there's, that's not on the agenda, even the law even states that...
Are you talking about approved or unapproved closed minutes?
Approved.
Yeah, approved closed, approved closed minutes should not leave the organization's location.
Or, or unapproved, but is it in the law like that?
The law makes a point of protecting closed meeting minutes. And it says that, for example, you cannot remove, when you're a new commissioner coming on, you cannot remove verbatim recordings from the location where you're kept, for example. The idea is, we want to provide as much...
Can I throw something here real quick?
Confidentiality as you can about closed meeting minutes and closed, and verbatim recordings. So most of my clients have a rule in place that says that closed meeting minutes do not leave.
Well, see, that's what you just said.
Until they're approved for release.
Most of our clients have a minute, so the only, everything that I was researching...
Have a rule, yeah.
Right, which states I have an ordinance or a rule. So if it's not on there, it, I, everything I've looked at Illinois law is not...
But I think it's a good custom practice to...
Hold on, Donny, one second.
To keep them, to keep them in the, in the bill list.
Let's answer this question real quick.
Go ahead, Don.
Okay, that's at the discretion of the board. Every, I brought this up a month ago too.
Right.
That's a discretion of whatever board you're on. If you're on a park district board, a school board, library board, the township board, that's at our discretion. We make that rule up. We state the fact that these rules, or these, these minutes don't leave, that's our discretion. You're not going to find it in any law saying it's, we can't do it. That's at the discretion of the individual boards. School districts have their members take their executive session minutes home. So yes, it is allowed, but our township, we don't do that. We keep it here.
And I can tell you that the vast majority of my clients, when they do the semi-annual review, or even when they circulate draft minutes at a meeting to get a vote for approval on them, as soon as the vote's made, the administrator picks those minutes back up, and they don't leave the building.
Right.
And that's usually a customer practice of the organization.
Okay, there was a brouhaha, because at a closed minute, I, I put my purse to go home.
But you did it underneath the table, it was not anybody's thing.
So, so I put the, I... Hold on a second. I, I have some minutes in my purse, okay? My first time I had ever gone to a closed minute. And again, I've read the law, I've done a lot of things. In the beginning of, when the closed meeting started, at that time, the clerk stated that you can't take the minutes home. Okay, I didn't know that. I took my purse, I opened it up, and I took the minutes out, and I put it up. I wasn't hiding taking it up, because I had never hid it putting in my purse.
Can we move on, Ed? We've already talked about this.
Hold on a second, please.
No, wait, I haven't, you guys have. So... The minute, please, this is...
It's audio.
But this is our, this is our, um, portion, we're going to question, we're going to question and discussion on a presentation, okay?
Right, and this is part of it.
It is, it is part of it, but at the same time, we're, we're getting, we're getting upset. I'm going to let you continue here, trustee Lucas, for maybe just another two minutes, okay? Because we, we do have our board meeting to continue to do, okay?
Well, you know what?
Well, no, we're going to continue, I'm letting you continue.
It's fine, it's fine.
Judy, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know all the facts about what happened, but I don't think that it's the kind of thing that people should be riled up about on either side. You know, if you didn't know there was a rule, then how could you be expected to know not to do that?
Thank you.
However, if you did know there was a rule, then you probably shouldn't have done that.
No, I didn't, we never...
Either way, we move on, right? Let's get over it and move on.
We don't call for my resignation?
What?
We don't castigate me, do we? And call for my resignation?
Okay, understood.
Okay, trustee Boltz, a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, trustee Hacker and trustee Lachlan at seven oh seven. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm, wait, we have to actually have, since you're on, you're on, we have to actually have a recall vote since you're remotely, Donny, sorry. Please do.
Trustee Boltz?
Aye.
Trustee Lucas?
Aye.
Trustee Hacker?
Aye.
Trustee Lachlan?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye, motion passes. Okay.
You need minutes to restart your...
We just need a minute to restart everything else, so just give us just one moment, please.